To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in a moment of silence, please. You may be seated. It's a great day in Woodbury County, and if you have concerns and would like to make them known, this is the time in the agenda where we open the floor to you, and you may approach the podium. And in so doing, please give your name and address. Are there any citizen concerns? Hearing none, the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, March 15, 2016.
Move it. Second.
Motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item four is approval of the minutes dated March 8, 2016.
Move approval of the minutes.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item number five is the discussion and approval of claims.
I'd move it. There was one in there, I can't remember what it was. It was a big one, though. Oh, well.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
He didn't come up with it yet. Did you have something, Mark?
I can't remember what it was, so I'll pass it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item number six is human resources, Ed Gilliland, and item six A is the approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions.
Where are we at?
Seven A is what we should be on. Do you have a different agenda area?
Six A.
I have seven A.
Seven A was the one with the closed session was added as number one.
I am now on the right agenda, thank you. Ed Gilliland, I will get rid of this one. Item seven A, thank you very much, is the approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions.
Move it. Second.
The motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item seven B is to authorize the chairman to sign the authorization to initiate the hiring process.
Move it. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item seven C, human resources department reorganization, originally came as it normally would for action, but because there is some extensive conversation that may ensue, I asked that this be an information item. And so is there, why don't we hand it over to you, first of all?
Sure. Ed Gilliland, HR. What we're doing is, we looked at the department, we wanted to try to make ourselves as flat and as efficient as possible, and we think we've got a good basic core of people there. We have a good knowledge base in the department. So what I wanted to do is, and these will all be internal postings, internal, within the department, so they wouldn't go outside the department for the first couple. We would have, we currently have a clerk two that we would move to senior clerk and leave the secretary three there. Our assistant director resigned in December, so we would replace that position with an administrative assistant. This would be an exempt position. The one thing I would want to say, we talked a little bit about salary, and it's possible that we would have to adjust the salary slightly, or more than $1,000, depending on what federal rulings do as far as exempt status is concerned. There's talk about the salary for an exempt status person being a little bit higher than what we had anticipated. That's fairly recent stuff, and the Department of Labor is supposed to make a ruling on that this summer sometime, so we'll know for sure if we need to.
Is that mic on? I can't hear you.
Can you, can you hear all right?
Yeah, if you, if you would, to speak as directly into the microphone.
I can hear it out here.
Can everyone hear in the back? Okay, thank you very much.
I could hear it out here, so I didn't want to blast you out either.
That's okay.
Okay, and I guess I'll start back from the beginning, then. We're going to post this internally, within the department, which would meet procedural requirement. We currently have four of us in the department, there were five. The assistant director resigned in December, and so we've been running short staff since sometime in early December. What we'd like to do is move the person who's currently occupying the clerk two position, move them to senior clerk. We would leave the secretary three in the secretary three position, and we would replace the assistant director with an administrative assistant. This person is mainly responsible for training, for safety, and for workman's comp at this point. That would continue, would have some supervisory duties as well, would be the one who would be in charge in the department when I was gone, those kinds of things. We feel that that would be very efficient use of time. And we would hire then a clerk two to come in and to help us kind of round out all of the duties and things. What that would result, currently the salary for the five people would be at $180,200. If that, if for 2016, if we would have kept the same people, would have been $186,722. What the proposed would do was it would move the salary for the department to $166,123 for the four staff people. So it actually would be a net savings to the department, but we think we'd be a little more efficient, we'd be flat. We would have some supervision when I was gone, but really just one level of management.
So essentially about a $20,000 difference in reduction, is that fair?
That's correct. That's correct. And any questions on?
It's our discussion by the board.
Is this a net increase of one person?
No, it would, we would be the same number of people as we have today, or not as today, but the same number of people as we had in November.
Did you say this, it's $48,000, that's how much additional? Is it $48,000, is that kind of a, am I reading that right? How much more is this going to cost? That's my question.
It's a $20,000 savings over what we would have had.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you just say that? I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I was thinking about the next item, so I apologize.
That's okay. This isn't the most exciting one on the agenda, I'm sure.
Further discussion by the board.
The only thing I guess I would add is we think we can be much more efficient than we have been. We're going to lay out duties a little more specifically, try to get everybody to specialize and bring unique knowledge to the position. And everyone will be cross-trained in the department, so if anyone's gone, there will be no slowdown in the claims process, or the, or the personnel moves, or any of those kind of pieces.
Very good. Thank you very much for this information item. You'll bring this back next week.
Yes, sir.
Great. And we will move to item seven D, which is true speak, discussion, and action.
And the true speak, what we'd like to do is, we have a number of people from the sheriff's department, a number of people from Sulan District Health Department, and the county assessor. We have two people. We have one person from HR. We'd like to bring them all in and train them on the true speak. The true speak is, as you guys know, is just a really exceptional tool that we have to help further communication between the employees and the managers. We think that it's, it's a great way to just increase the effectiveness of county government and increase the, that commitment that employees have to getting the overall mission accomplished within the department. We'd like to be able to train those people. We unfortunately had to move the training back to May 25th and 26th. We had a little bit of a conflict up in District Health Department, seems that contractors shown up about two weeks earlier than they thought. So all of their resources are dedicated to preparing for their clients.
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
You've got nine people on here that are not Woodbury County employees, should their own budgets take care of their?
I guess that would, to me, that would be a question for you folks, but I think that this is a training that we want to introduce throughout the county, and, you know, there is some difference, I guess, as to technically who employs the people at Sulan District Health.
Well, Sulan District Health and the assessors office.
And the assessors. You know, that really is a question more for the board, I would say. And it, this is something we want to introduce throughout the county and make part of our culture. I think it's important that we have them involved, but once we get to the budgetary items, that step, I have to step back.
Yeah, I guess my own personal take would be is it's a board initiative and something that we're, we're asking those employees to partake in, that it's incumbent upon us to ultimately fund it. It's maybe a harder sell to say, this is something we want you to do and pay for at the same time, and ultimately those employment issues will ultimately find their way in front of us, whether for, for good or ill, at some point. And so that would be my, my preference, and I just want to make sure this can be taken care of within your budget currently.
Yes, yes, we looked at the budget. We do have extra dollars in the budget, because we have run short for three months now, so...
What do you mean by that? You've run short?
With, as far as, as far as help is concerned, or staff. So there is extra money within the budget because of that.
I'd move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion?
Well, this was meant to be certainly ongoing, I believe. So I wish it would have been worked into this budget, but I'm glad that, I hope going forward, it will be worked into future budgets under a training.
Okay.
So, I mean, you shouldn't have to come back before the board to continue this, this education.
Yes, sir.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. We are now to item seven E, which is recommendations for revision of travel policy, discussion and action.
And the policy that you have before you is one that, that essentially follows, as I understand, DOT policy, and it's one that's designed to not cost the county anything more, but allow a little bit of flexibility when people wish to attend meetings that they don't want to fly to. Essentially, it boils down to if they need extra business days to travel by car, that those have to be taken as vacation days. If they don't require extra business days, then they're, they are able to just drive instead of fly, they have to take the lower amount, so the mileage would have added to more than what the flight would cost, then they're reimbursed at the level of, the price level of the flight. Seems like a good flexible way to allow a person no extra cost to the county to be able to travel the way that they would see best fit.
I would move it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, this has gone through the Policy Review Committee. Is there further discussion?
Does that happen very often, that people drive instead of?
Almost never. But we do have a county engineer that would like to do this. You may know him. And we, I'm sure there are going to, there may be other times come up in the future, this is just kind of preparation for when that happens, so we don't have a last-minute scramble.
I had a county supervisor do it years ago.
Okay. And some people do have phobias of flying, too, and you don't find that out until you're almost ready to force them to get on the plane.
I don't want to belabor this, but if you do have a true phobia, do you have a doctor's note that you can't get on an airplane? Should you be docked a day, or is that an accommodation that we would have to make?
That would probably be an accommodation. That was probably a bad example on my part. It's a very good point.
This would cover it, I would think.
This said you have to take a day of...
In that case, we wouldn't, they wouldn't have to, I mean, we would just have to go with, that would be a different situation.
Okay.
This is a choice, the other one would be an accommodation under ADA, essentially.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, hearing, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. We are now at a set time, 4:45, which is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2017 budget. Dennis, would you like to give any introductory remarks, or is there anyone who would like to come forward from the public?
Okay, I did send to the board in a packet a two-page memo, would you like me to go through that real quickly?
Sure.
Okay. I did send a memo, and for the public's information, we can make copies of this memo public, because it is a public record. What I did, I broke it down in several categories. And the first category is the new proposed tax rates for fiscal year 17. What I did there, I compared by fund, by total, countywide, and then the rural basic fund, and then total for the rural basic people, which is outside your incorporated limits. For the countywide, and the cities and townships, the tax rate actually dropped .71 of 1%, seven tenths of 1% or 5.355 cents per thousand. On the rural basic, it did drop a little bit more, because we used local office sales tax to offset the special bridge project levies. And in this case here, the tax rate went down 13.264 cents per thousand, or 1.25%. Again, they both went down, when you look at total, not by fund, you have to look by total, because we use different methods to balance some where it went over the cap, or balance it going by deductions, other funds. When you come to the second page, our budget totals for Woodbury County, I broke this into two categories. I broke it into operating budgets, which actually went up about $300,000, I believe, in that vicinity, and then our CIP projects, because that went substantially, because we have a lot of projects in our proposals for next year, including the jail expansion for 1.199 million, which some of these may happen, they may not happen, you know, all depends on how high the cost goes for the jail. Then we had a lot of makeup, we had a lot of things we had to do throughout the building to catch up over the last 20, 30 years that, you know, kind of got put on the wayside, because we weren't willing to go out and probably fund them. So now we are. Like I say, there's 9.69 million of that, five point, I think 5.95 million is CIP projects for courthouse buildings, other buildings within the county, then you also have a special bridge project, which is about 1.4 million, and then you have the secondary road projects also embedded in this. So of this courthouse amount around 5.1 million, which included 1.199 million. Okay, when you come down to how this affects different classes of property, I always like to show this each year, so you know what it does affect, a home on a $100,000 assessed house, in the cities, on a residential, when we roll this back, and I did show the rollbacks below, where you see actually on residential, rollbacks actually went back 1100 to 1%. Ag land went up 1.4%, and the commercial stayed the same, because of 90% rollback. That's frozen. Okay, in this case here, when you come to residential within the cities, on a $100,000 house, roll back to the rollback rates, your taxes will actually go down $3.79 or .91%. This is your house stayed the same in assessed value. If you had improvementous house, obviously you may be paying a little bit more. That, you know, is what happens when you improve, or the valuation goes up. But if your house stays stable, it's going to go down a little bit. And that was the $200,000 house, you can almost double that on, you know, onwards up. For a commercial property, it actually went down for a $100,000 house, rolled back to $90,000, it went down $4.82. So if you're talking a million dollar valuation, roll back, take that times 10, you save about $48 on that million dollars. The point is, it went down. On the townships, on the residential, it went down a little bit more, because we had to roll, or the decrease in rural basic fund, so on a residential house in a rural, on that same $100,000 cess, rolled back to taxable value, you'd save about $8.53. On commercial, it's $11.94. On ag lands, it's $8.83 increase, now that's because the rollbacks went up 1.4%. So, you know, the roll, and ag land is valued a different way, based on productivity, so land may be valued at $2,000 for tax purposes, and reality could be worth $10,000 to $15,000 or higher, but it's based on productivity. So that's kind of recap of where we're at, the tax rates went down, the tax, or tax that people pay on a county share only. Next week, we'll have a little slideshow showing how, you know, it's all broke out to different classes, valuations, our county budget, things like that, but we wanted to wait till we got this finalized today to come back with that.
Dennis, thank you very much. Is there anything you want to add before we open this up to the public?
Nope.
Who would like to?
That's pretty much it.
Thank you for, for all your work this budget season, I'm sure there may be more
Don't go away.
Questions and discussion from the board, but I just want to make sure that, in the nature of this being a public hearing, if there is anyone who would like to speak, either for or against this budget, please make your way to the podium.
Hello, Board, Taylor Goodman, TRC. Just wanted to pass along our, our statement on the budget and its process. On the TRC, we'd like to express our appreciation to the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors and County Staff for delivering a responsible, efficient, and transparent process. While the TRC commends the County Board for lowering levy rates countywide, we are slightly concerned with the roughly $2 million increase in tax askings due to the 7.7 increase in countywide property valuations. As, as Dennis mentioned, we understand most of this is due to new growth in, in the county, so we are understanding of that. It is important for the public to understand that when increased property valuations exceed any decrease in the tax levy, many taxpayers, in fact, end up seeing an increase in their taxes, and as was previously stated, we under, we also understand that for that to happen, you either need to purchase a new house, or have your house assessed after renovation, so we understand that as well. It is our understanding that these increases were primarily due to factors outside the, the county's control, including but not limited to general election expenses, which obviously do not occur every year, rising costs associated with health insurance, and the limited addition of new staff made necessary by our growing county. Sound budgeting practices require that the county continue to work carefully to control all, all costs and not increase them unless absolutely necessary. Finally, we would like to recognize Dennis Butler and his staff on the work they did to improve their annual budget book. This was my first year, but I did look through previous years, and this year's book was much, much simpler and much easier to understand, so we wanted to publicly thank everyone for that, so, thank you very much.
You just raised the budget. He doesn't have a staff.
Now that you mention it.
I'll have to start looking for a new job.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there others in the public that would like to approach the board and either speak for or against this budget? Hearing none. The board?
I would just say, growth is good. We're fortunate to have had growth. The growth in the county undercuts inflation, which I think is, is remarkable when you consider all the services we're tasked to provide. The levy rate has been cut, very pleased about that, I think that's more good news for the taxpayers. A couple notable things about this budget that I like is it plans for the long term. We've seen with the revitalization of, of an entire department tasked with, with repairing and sustaining the buildings here, we've seen great improvements there, long-term planning with the five-year CIP, and we've also seen a commitment from the board to push back against our decreasing reserves, which could become a real problem if we didn't take the steps that we have, so we're both fortunate, and, and I think it was a very good move that, that we were able to do that, and also lower the tax levy.
I would say it's pretty cool lowering the taxes two years in a row, pretty cool. But you have to also put the caveat along with that, when the city and the schools get done, your taxes may not go down, because we don't have control of those, but we're doing our part, I'm hoping the city does their part, and the school district does their part.
Well, I might say, I appreciate TRC, your, your comments on the budget, and appreciate your concern on the tax askings going up nearly $2 million. I probably have a little bit different viewpoint. I, I've lived through this budget seven previous years, and know that we have been in a holding pattern, we haven't taken raises some of those years. We really needed to expand on some positions, our departments have just, you know, gone without, and this was a very good year for us to increase our spending, because we did need to add those positions. So I don't look at it as necessarily a bad thing, we were able to do some of the things that need to be done for a while, and still keep that levy rate below what it was, so I just, I, I too appreciate the, the tax asking reference going up. Oh, I might say one more thing. My concern might have been is the large CIP budget. That's what I'm concerned about, I think some of those projects could have been staggered maybe a little bit more over the next few years, so that would have been my concern, or that is my concern.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. Supervisor Clausen?
Danny, I tried to eat a whole meal, just been unsuccessful. The CIP, the $9,69,000, now is that after one year drops off?
Yes, it will. We actually borrowed the money during the fiscal year of 1718. The money, and I have to remember, too, when you come to secondary roads, those are separate levies through rural basic, and they use other funds such as local office sales tax, things like that, but the one you're probably referring to is the CIP projects within the Fund 360, which is the county buildings, you know, improving those, that should drop off. This won't be continuous borrowing, it's 5 million, or 5,100,000, whatever it is. This is an exceptional year, where we're trying to catch up, get things caught up, where then they should turn to just general maintenance, where we won't have this critical time where, when I say CIP projects, these are projects that are going to last more than five years, because when you borrow money, you want to make sure that the money you're paying back in the project, that the project lasts longer than five years. Most of these will last 10, 15, 20 years or longer. So we're doing the right thing by doing the CIP projects. When this is done, there may be a time we have to set up a maintenance budget within our general basic or somewhere, to maintain these projects after this next fiscal year. But the actual levy for the borrowing of money will follow in 1718, where we do have one loan falling off, maybe, I have checked, maybe two from this coming year and next year, will help compensate the tax increase there to maybe lower it back a little bit further than what it would be. But this will be an exceptional year for 17, 16, 17. 1718, I don't expect to be anywhere near 5 million, because we'll have possibly a jail renovation project done, and we have about, totally, we have about 50 projects. That should trim down to a lot less to half, or even less than that, but time will tell with that, but these will get us where we just budget for maintenance, instead of budgeting to repair, you know, fix everything, to get it back in shape.
All right, but a year from now, you're going to have to budget how many dollars? Close to 2 million?
Well, you'll have to, no, because you're going to pay it back over five years, so divided by five, you're probably talking a million bucks a year, plus interest.
But your budget right now is over 9 million.
Correct. That's budgeting numbers, but you're bar, you're budgeting for one year usage, but you're paying it back over five years. So it's paid back over five years, so that 5 million is paid back a million bucks a year, plus interest over those five years. We don't pay it all back in one year.
All right, but you've got the 1 million plus the four years previous. Or are you adding that all together?
For the future.
Right.
Yes.
And what, what number is that?
Well, I'm just taking the one, 5 million divided by five is 1 million bucks a year.
Right, but then you've got the other...
You've got other projects paying for. Well, the other 4 million is paid off secondary roads. That comes up with special bridge projects, which will fall off after fiscal.
No, 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 that's CIP.
That is CIP, that's projects.
You've included all of the, under this umbrella.
You've included secondary roads in this one.
Yes, because that, secondary roads, projects, and any other projects we have under local office sales tax, and local office sales tax, and also a special bridge project. Now, when you come to fiscal year 1718, that 5 million is going to be reduced, plus 1718, that'll be our last year of the bridge projects, the 1.3 million, so really, if you want to look further down the road, it's even going to go down further, because the special bridge project will be done 1819. This, it's, you almost need a picture, see how this goes, flows through, but the 5 million, the 9 million includes everything, because it's capital projects. Of that, 5 million, one is for courthouse buildings, other projects such as that. The rest of it is all secondary roads, and a few, about $300,000 out of local office sales tax. And I say, as you look down the road through these fiscal years, it keeps decreasing then.
What's the going interest rate?
Going interest rate right now, the last one we had was 1.39, and they feel that's going to be pretty much the same. We do bid this out, our county treasurer has a good program where they bid it out to all the banks, so all the banks in the county get a shot at it. And the last bank we had was 1.39, which, right now, if you're going to borrow money, now's the time to borrow money. It's at incredibly low rates, which are unseen, we'll probably never see them again. So we're doing it this year, we're... We'll probably never see them again. So, we're doing it this year. We're going to lock in the rates probably in April, May next year for the $5 million. And we're still anticipating that's still be under 2%, which again, is very low. We've had some as high as 3.5% to 4%. And when you approach that over short term, it's not a lot of money, but it does add up.
So, when we budget next year, we won't be able to rely on an interest rate figure because it'll come in April?
It'll be April of 17. But the way rates are going, I read today somewhere, the feds were not anticipating a rate increase, and they've been going a long time that way. And even if they increase a little bit, we still feel by then it'll still be under 2%. But still streaming low.
I have a couple of comments. I want to also thank you for everything that you've been providing throughout this. The tax rates going down is very, very critical. I think it's an economic development tool, but also it obviously affects families. And so, I think going from 751 to 746 is very good and responsible, and 1063 down to 1051 is also great. One of the things that I think is critical to know is that from our starting position, we cut over $1 million in this budget, actually $1,074,000. The $300,000 increase outside of the CIP projects is almost wholly attributable to the necessary positions that we thought would be for mandated and critical public service. So, to me, it's been a very good process, and wherever the Board heads, I think everyone has contributed. And so, appreciate that.
I think we should go back too to the process. And we kind of hatched that last year in concept, but Dennis has done an excellent job in pulling this stuff together under three umbrellas. And I think that's been very good.
You know, first, our department heads and elected officials, some of them, I've been a little reluctant how we split this up between improvement program, CIP program, operating. But when we got all said and done, they really did kind of like it, gave some people opportunities with their improvement programs to come forward they never had before. So, splitting into three was a good thing, and we're always going to strive to make even better yet. We will come with a line item description book next year, so everybody knows what's in maintenance, what's in this line, this line item. That is forthcoming.
I just have one follow-up question. And I too agree that the budget process, you did a nice job at that. I know you worked very hard. But I was going back on a comment you made on the increase. You know, something that we talked about before, and I'm just clarifying this. When you give us budget numbers, preliminary budget numbers, those are certain, that's a certified budget, which in 16, it was 51,578,848. But that included case management, correct?
Correct.
So, when you reduce case management, because the state took that over, a true picture of that budget was $50,362,000 plus $152. So, basically, our budget did go up $5 million.
You said $5 million?
$5 million. Am I right? I guess that's a question. That's what I wrote down. I can show you my numbers, my notes.
Except, the case management money was not related to taxes. That was 100% reimbursed to the state.
Well, it was back in fiscal year.
Case management was reimbursed. That was a budget numbers. It was $1.2 million for this fiscal year. We didn't have that in next year. And where that $1.2 million got pretty much eaten up was there's new costs such as wage increase, our negotiations, our self-help insurance fund, our, what's the other one? General election coming up.
Well, and the CIP's in there too.
Yes, and CIP's in there. And that's where our big increase came in.
That's where the big increase was. But when I do the numbers, that's what I'm coming up with is, and it's still okay in my book because we're still able to lower the tax rate. So, at the end of the day, the taxpayer is going to think we did a good job. But just to be clear in my mind, and just to be very transparent, because that's what we like to be done, it did go up $5 million. Is that correct? Am I wrong? From 2016 to 20...
The $1.2 million off this year, that...
And I don't mean to put you on the spot, Dennis, but...
That kind of counterset our other increases where we had the wage increase, the health insurance, our cash reserve increase. If we wouldn't have had that $1.2 million off, yeah, it would have gone up $5 million, probably. But we had that to offset.
I understand that we did.
In other years where mental health was taken over by the state, we had it. In some years where the court system was taken over. But those help us to counter offset budget-wise, because we didn't raise taxes, but budget-wise, it saved us there.
So, is everybody following that?
It's confusing. I mean, that's why I asked again.
And the increase with the CIP included in that?
Yes.
Some of these are projects that may not even come to fruition, right? I mean, the $1.2 million, I'm hoping does. And we're using that as a placeholder right now for the LEC expansion. But I just want to make sure that it doesn't overinflate to the public on what it is that we're ultimately looking at as far as the tax impact.
Right.
If it doesn't happen, does that go back to reserves, Dennis?
If the project doesn't happen, what happens? We won't borrow the money. It won't go in reserves because we haven't actually borrowed the money. That's why we usually wait till March or April to get a more definite figure, so we don't run the problems we've had before, where, example, we asked made fire allowance for $3,400,000, came in at 110, so we have already borrowed the money. Fortunately, you got two years to spend it, and we use that to help offset the borrowing this year, or next year, for our projects this year. Did you notice I had a total project $2 million? Took off the rebates, took off the money we had carryover from other projects from previous year, and that helped offset our borrowing for the following year to $1.892 million.
Any other discussion or questions from the Board?
We'll close the public hearing.
And a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. We are now on item 8B, which is the discussion on the compensation board recommendation on elected official salaries for fiscal year 2017 and approval of resolution. This is an action item. Dennis?
Okay. What we have in the budget currently is a 5% increase is what the comp board recommended. So, our tax rates, if there's no change, our tax rates still show decrease. I did furnish the Board a copy of 2.5%, 3%, and 3.25% to show the impact, which is very insignificant. So, it's basically up to the Board what they want to do on this compensation board recommendation.
Is there discussion? Auditor Gill?
Pat Gill, Woodbury County Auditor and Recorder. I'm here, it's always kind of a taboo subject for an elected official to talk about these raises. But I did want to take this opportunity to talk to you about how I felt things came about and the observation that I had at the Compensation County Board, or the Compensation Board meeting that took place. They recommended, in the end, 5% across the board for all elected officials. When they made the motion, there was, the representative from the supervisors made the motion to reduce the supervisors to 3%. And that failed to get a second. And that was based on communication, apparently, that they'd had from members of the supervisors, was to reduce that to 3%. I don't know who talked to them, but that's what the recommendation was. And it failed because it didn't get a second. And so, they went back to the recommendation of 5% across the board. So, I just wanted to give you that background. So, here I want to read this statement that explains what my thinking was and when I talked to my representative on the compensation board. The Iowa Code, Section 331-907, deals with the annual compensation of county elected officials. Along with other factors, it directs the county compensation board to annually review the compensation of elected officials and to take into consideration compensation paid to comparable officers in other counties of this state. Historically, the population factor has been the overriding consideration by the compensation board, not only in Woodbury County, but also by most compensation boards within the state. Woodbury County currently ranks as the sixth most populous county in Iowa. Currently, the Woodbury County auditor and treasurer salaries rank fifth in the state. Their salaries are adjusted when their recorder's office was eliminated, and that adjustment has helped keep them comparable to other counties with similar population size. That was when the recorder's office was eliminated, that was brought by citizens, and the treasurer and the auditor received bumps at that time, and that has followed through from that initial bump that took place. The Woodbury County attorney's salary ranks ninth, and the sheriff ranks 11th. The Woodbury County supervisor salaries rank a woeful, I said 34th, but Mr. Ung informed me that it was 39th. And I got it from the ISAC website, and for some reason, they said you ranked 13th. I don't know what kind of math that came up with, but it is 39th. And that has always concerned me. There are essentially three different methods. Woodbury County employees receive compensation adjustments. Most hourly employees are members of the various collective bargaining units, and their adjustments are determined by a process that involves negotiations between professional representatives that rely on many economic considerations. The second method involves wage plan employees that are a combination of hourly and salaried employees. Their adjustments are arrived at by a recommended plan by the Human Resources Department after consideration of those bargaining unit settlements and the extensive comparable data gathered from other counties and private sector sources. So, what happens is the collective bargaining starts. That starts the whole process for all the employees in the county. And that's a fairly, it's a great negotiation process that takes place. And then, the wage plan is put together by, you know, Human Resources Department, their recommendation. Then, third method is for elected officials and their deputies, determined by the compensation board after receiving input from elected officials that represent them. The wage plan category includes county management staff. They will receive a 3.25% raise this year. It's the fourth and final year that they will receive the identical raise according to the plan approved by the Board of Supervisors. This is the third such plan approved by the Board during my tenure. And honestly, I don't have a problem with that because I've always talked about that. Is that when that drives it, the bargaining unit process starts it, the wage plan folks are the next ones that are determined in order to keep those wage, the management folks above the collective bargain, the hourly folks. And then, third such plan, it has always been my challenge to advocate for my deputies to keep pace with the Board's management staff because I believe these deputies perform similar duties. As you're aware, their compensation is limited to the percentage of my salary, which means I also advocate for me. That's the way the process works. I contacted my representative and asked him to recommend a 5% increase for all elected officials. The compensation board agreed with that recommendation. I recommended 5% primarily because after taking into consideration longevity pay that was implemented in 2014 as a result of a 0% increase approved by the Board for elected officials and their deputies. My longest-serving deputy will be within $42 of what her salary would have been if the same adjustments had been with the wage plan employees. And this is true only if she receives the longevity payment and the proposed 5% increase. That's the way that, in 2014, there was no raises for elected officials and their deputies. And so, we implemented at that time a longevity payment for deputies. There was much consternation over that, a lot of discussion over that. But it was approved by the Board. And so, that's where we arrived at. Hopefully, you know, a 5% increase will improve the standing of the county attorney and the sheriff among their peers statewide. I would have advocated for a larger increase for the supervisors if I thought there would be support for the Board. I sincerely believe the Board of Supervisors had performed a service to the Board and the citizens of Woodbury County by continually advocating for lower increases for Board members. And that's based on, now, I'm just going to finish. I'm reminded of a conversation I had with Ray Burnight, who was serving on the Board at the time, that we had this discussion. We were discussing the reluctance of the Board to approve raises for county elected officials. And he chuckled as he said this. We had a good give and take on it. But he said, "Well, Pat, you know, if you get those salaries too high, everyone will want these jobs." My response was, "And there is something wrong with that." Because, you know, for years, this year, there wasn't an editorial from the Sioux City Journal that said, "Don't give elected officials raises." I was surprised because I see it almost annually. But one of the editorial by the Sioux City Journal was, one time, was they were talking about the number of, in fact, it was in 2012, they said that having lots of folks run for these offices is a good thing. And I've always believed that. And I think that's an important part of the compensation when you consider for the Board of Supervisors. County government is a different animal than the city or the school district administration, where professional administrators are accountable for the day-to-day operations. Like it or not, county government is set up to be run by supervisors. And that has been true from day one, and it's true across the state. We had that discussion about administrator. You folks have always run the county. That's the way it's been. The chairperson receives the brunt of that. I recently had my eyes open when I was tasked with trying to nail down the committees that the current Board members sit on and their responsibilities. I'm up to 34 and still counting, as far as the number of committees that you folks serve on. I think that's something that should be considered. When you consider the fact that Polk, Lynn, and Story Counties supervisors receive the same compensation that the auditor and recorder and the treasurer do, I absolutely believe that supervisors in Woodbury County should be better compensated. I doubt that I will see in my lifetime, but I believe an effort to educate the public should be made in order to accomplish sizable improvement to the area of Woodbury County supervisor pay. For this reasons, I urge you to approve the compensation schedule that the Board, the compensation Board, is placed before you for your consideration. Now, when we talk, the reason I'm here, again, is because of the compensation board. I recommended, and some of the elected officials were a little bit concerned whether it was a strategic blunder that I asked for that same amount for the Board of Supervisors. And telling you, because I honestly believe that, is that you folks should receive that raise. I think that, I think the chairperson should be up closer to what the auditor and the treasurer make in this county. Honestly, I honestly believe that. But some of the other folks were concerned is that since they'd asked that, they'd received input from the compensation board represented by the supervisors had received input to be at 3%. The other folks were concerned is that you're going to take this opportunity to lower that to 3%. And I'm urging you that you do the 5% across the Board. I think it's fair to all the elected officials, including yourself. And I think it's, I just think it's important that you do that in order to keep pace. If you have any questions, I'll answer them.
Other questions for Auditor Gill?
And I apologize Supervisor Smith for coming down. Supervisor Smith hates to see me get out of that chair and come down here, but...
Only because he's mic'd up like we are, if we all got up and went down every time we went to say stuff. But no, you did a nice job. I'm just fine tonight.
It all started when the previous Board made a conscious effort not to mic me up upstairs.
Well, you're mic'd up now, so...
Thank you very much. We really do appreciate that. Are there others who would like to speak on this issue, or Board members of supervisor own?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Gill. You mentioned it's a taboo issue. I'd have to agree that supervisors are in the unenviable position of actually voting on their own raises. None of the other elected officials have that distinct honor and privilege. I've given quite a bit of thought to this. I wanted to pass out ISAC data that Mr. Gill referenced that ranks supervisor pay specifically. You'll notice Woodbury County is 34th in this sheet, and you may see the number is different than your salary because it averages in the chair, the chair salary increase. But we are 39th if you look at supervisor pay, and we are 6th population-wise. I didn't make up those numbers. Those are completely objective numbers. I was just thinking about what the Sioux City Council did and raised their pay 50%. The Sioux City Journal editorial board was referenced in the past, and they ran a story on that saying... on that saying it is justified. The main, one of the reasons being, the, the pay level is not exorbitant when compared to pay for county members, council members in other large Iowa cities. And then it stated what I thought was kind of a subtle dig at the county when it said the pay of council members, even with the increases, remains less than half the pay of Woodbury County supervisors. By the way, they'll vote on their pay soon. I would just, I went into this without knowing what I would find, but if, and I'm not supporting this, I'll repeat, I'm not supporting this. If the Woodbury County Board increased Supervisor's salary by 50%, we would be at $50,118. The fifth most, the number five county for pay makes $51,225. Number six county makes $49,428. That means Woodbury County is 6th in population. If we did exactly what the Sioux City Council did, we would be exactly 6th in pay. That's staggering. I did not make, I didn't, I didn't make this up. I didn't fudge those numbers. That's simply what the data indicates. And I don't support that. I don't support a 50% raise. And we couldn't. But I think that's interesting. So obviously, if there was a situation where the County Board did that, I can anticipate, tongue-in-cheek, I can anticipate the Sioux City Journal Editorial Board saying that was also justified. But the point in bringing that up is I don't ever want to be in that position, even though technically we, we would be. I don't want to ever be in that position where we would have to consider a drastic, shocking raise to keep pace with other counties or, or a situation where we can't get people to run for the office. That's a pretty, I mean, we deal with, we deal with a lot in county government and we oversee budgets of other elected officials that, that city governments don't have to do because they have, you know, they're very heavy on staff and, and, you know, taxpayers may, may think they're saving a little bit on the salaries of city officials, but they make up for it with very expensive city administrators and, you know, ballpark figure, figure a couple hundred thousand dollars for someone just to administrate other, other staff. In some cases, the reaction from the taxpayers individually that I've noticed is if they don't like the member, if they don't like their elected official, then they're paid too much. If they do like them, they're not paid enough. I've heard that personally. I think that all of us going to our own partisan central committee meetings has probably heard that in the past. But it's, it's our job to look at, look at the objective numbers, not to take, as we've tried to do, take the person out of it and look at the, and look at the position. So I just wanted to pass out that sheet and, and notify the Board and basically echo the assessment that, you know, I have to give it to the previous Board for their, for their restraint and their own raises. But, you know, but the fact of the matter is, do we want to go and, and take the step that the Sioux City Council had to take at some point in the future? I don't think so. And so I, I am advocating for a raise, but not, certainly not a raise that the Sioux City Council would ever have to make.
Sir, thank you very much Supervisor Ung. Is there further discussion?
I have a different spin on it. I participated in six negotiations of contracts this year. Ed and I and the Sheriff and Mark Nara and others. We were given marching orders to stay at 3% or under. And we bargained in good faith over a number of days and I would, and it was in good faith and the discussions with the union members, I think, was very good. And I think we have a good relationship with them now. And I, I would really not feel very good to go back to those groups and say, eh, we got a 5%. Sorry.
Of course, they probably got raises last year. And, you know, one thing Supervisor Ung, that's been my observation is if it's an election year, those that are up for election don't vote for the raises because it's a, you know, you get a few bad editorials, you might get the Journal, big editorial, and like you said, a dig. So it's politically motivated, but I too agree with, with you and with you too, Pat, that I think you want to attract the best quality people that you can for these positions. Now, we do have some young blood. I know Jeremy, you're working another full-time job and then even another part-time on top of that. Matthew, you, I believe, went part-time in your position, but you're not able not to have another job too. And the rest of us are all kind of retired. So if we want young, vital people, you know, to be able to do these jobs, like I would have loved to have had this job when I was 27, couldn't have done it, quite honestly. I was a school employee and, and part-time was not really an option. So I had to wait until I raised my family and then I could afford to live on this. So I too think that we need to set the example that this is a growing county. We think enough of this position to have the guts to give it the, the salary that it deserves. And, and I think it's easier not to vote for the raise than to vote for it. So I'm going to go ahead and, I did just now, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to accept the COP Board recommendation. Is that how I'm supposed to say it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a, a motion on the floor.
Larry can hardly believe I did.
You okay?
I, I didn't, I didn't get it. I didn't even get a chance to speak again.
Oh, sorry, Larry. Before I lost my guts, I thought I would throw it out there. You can second for discussion.
No, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as the motion died first.
I'm still waiting.
Mr. Chairman, see, the motion's died for lack of a second. I could agree with a lot of what's been said, but when you run for this office, you know what the pay is. I don't know if you put $10,000 or $20,000 more on top, what you're going to attract other than what you see here. The other officials, I think, are reimbursed pretty well. I would make a motion for the elected officials to get a two and a half percent raise. That's where it goes.
First motion has died. We now have a new motion for two and a half percent.
And that would be in line with what we negotiated with the unions.
Is there a second? Crickets. So hearing no second, then that motion has died. I am going to speak. I think you're all right to a variety of, an extent. And I do have a trouble, I have trouble with supporting more in, in our labor force than what, you know, or less than what management would be receiving. I mean, that was something that this Board weighed in on when it was a discussion with the assessors' office. And we looked at those who were collectively bargained for. I also know that our, our deputies work extremely hard and that longevity pay was something when it was, you know, and I don't know what budget constraints were, were facing you all, so I don't, but that was when it was 0%. I believe that something along the lines of 3% in keeping longevity pay would be good. I do believe it's deserved. I believe that there are outstanding elected officials and deputies that deserve that, including people on this Board. So.
Is that a motion?
It's about to be. For me, and this is just a personal choice, I will not take the raise, I will donate it to the Courthouse Foundation. That's something that I choose to do. I have a, you know, if you all want to use that for literature or audio, that's fine. We can do it in the name of a late, great West High teacher, Margaret Trisla, who taught me how to write, or G.R. Batchelor, who once did the same. That's my personal choice. I begrudge no one on this Board for doing otherwise. So with that, I'd move 3%.
Second. And I would add, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Munson quoted a difference of opinion and then cited the, the wage negotiations. Just to clarify, I, I didn't and won't and can't support an increase greater than the union, than one of the union contracts. So Supervisor Munson, just understand.
I don't think I disagreed with anything that Pat said or anyone else. It ought to be more, but I, personally, I just can't go greater than what we were charged with for negotiations.
I think that's fair.
Further discussion? I've had, if you'd please record my statements in a minute. Appreciate it. Hearing no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. And as this is a resolution, I understand there may be something differently. Do we need to call the roll, read this resolution?
Yes, you have to.
Okay, we did get a sample form from ISAC that other counties are using. In this form here, you're actually going with option number two if this, if this motion is approved, which will read therefore be resolved. The Woodbury County Board of Supervisors approve the following salary adjustments for elected officials for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016. I will have to go back after this motion is done in the morning to adjust this, adjust our budgets to reduce the tax rate a slight amount less than what it is. And each Board member will have to sign the resolution on the backside either, either a or nay. And there'll be signatures on the back and we'll file this with our budget when we do it. And also it'll be on record in the Auditor's Office. So I'll have to have, I'll adjust it in the morning because this time of night, there's enough time to get it done. And I already talked to the State that we can certify on the 16th instead of 15th with the circumstances involved here. So from there, we'll have it ready first thing by 8:30 in the morning, it'll be ready for anybody, for all to stop down, sign during the day sometime, if they could. Thank you.
Very good. There's a motion and a second. Will the Auditor please call the roll?
Munson?
No.
Munson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Aye.
Tate?
Aye. And the motion and resolution carry four to one. Next item on the agenda is Item 8C, which is Discussion and Adoption of the Fiscal Year 2017 Budget.
I would move it.
With a motion and I will second it. Is there discussion? Hearing none, will the Auditor please call the roll?
Munson?
No.
Munson?
Yes.
Smith?
Can I say anything besides yes or no?
Say whatever you like.
What? Aye.
I'm sorry, was that aye?
That was aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. And the fiscal year 2017 budget has been adopted on a vote of four to one. Item 9A is the approval of lifting of tax.
One more thing, I'll have to make the adjustments. Again, I have a form here that'll have to be signed by the Chair sometime tomorrow and also by Pat.
Thank you very much. Item 9A is the approval of a lifting of a tax suspension for an individual with the initials LT.
Move it.
Second.
With a motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item 9B is approval of a lifting of tax suspension for an individual with the initials DJ.
Move it.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item 9C is clarifications for audiovisual equipment update. Do we have Brian rise with us? As Brian's coming forward, wanted to gain some clarification. There were some adjustments that were made last week to the audio equipment. I have since listened to it over YouTube, which has been helpful, but there, I don't think it was the best presentation. I'll give myself the, the bad credit for not having made that clear. And Brian was not with us toward the end of the meeting, so wanted Brian to come forward today. You have some information that's been disseminated on what that budget breakdown does. Again, this is an information item only tonight so that you have enough discussion and we can make an informed decision sometime next week. So Brian, do you mind just giving us a little bit of an overview of the, the costs within this cleaned up, cleared up hopefully, proposal?
Sure. The main addition that we're doing to the system is the ability to do remote phone-ins without having me or somebody else come down to set it up and run it every time. In order to do that, we're looking at this auto hybrid item, which will plug into the county phone system here directly. We won't have outboard equipment. It'll just be a simple call and drop button. Everything else is what is required to do that well and do it automatically. That's all the Rain equipment that you see listed there.
So that's this first item here on the audio processor and VoIP hybrid for remote phone-in?
Yes.
And all those items underneath. So those first seven items are in order to be able to make it so that if supervisors hear telephonically, that that's not only clear for recordings, but also vice versa, to be able to hear.
Correct, be able to hear on the other end.
Okay. Can you describe adding desktop mic for Mr. Butler, boundary mic? What will that do? And this is the second boldface item.
Sure. Just, need was brought for that Mr. Butler needed a mic over here instead of sharing the mic with the presenter. Adding the boundary mic with the above system allows us to pick up recordings if somebody gets off center of the mic.
If there are two individuals, three individuals, that would also help?
Right, yep.
In that case?
And I would know, we probably need to look at this podium here. I saw binders were filling up the entire podium. Podiums, the boundary mic's not going to work in that case. So just to be aware of that.
Okay. And then do you want to just go through the other, the other items quickly?
Next, replace portable PA with permanent installed. Rather than the portable PV system that we have right now, we're looking at mounting speakers to the columns, a set of two for the audience here, another set of two that's pointing towards the Board members. The Board members will just get the audio from the telephone. Again, that's about separating the audio, preventing feedback and improving it rather than a small speaker sitting up there.
Okay.
Then there was also interest in adding a 65-inch LCD to the wall, have it permanently wall-mounted, and that's what that item is there for.
Does it get to turn one of, or is it going to be a, what kind of mount?
This one is just a straight flat mount. But we need to talk about where that's going to go, but approximately where that one is there, but wall-mounted. Could it be a 65? I think that one's a 47 or 46.
If we put it in the middle, everybody would have the same advantage or disadvantage.
Yep, we could center it too.
Okay. Anything, any other on the two?
Then we just have a new rack panel and then upgrading some of the splitting equipment. When the rack was initially built, all the laptops were VGA. So we're looking at moving that up to HDMI and to support the monitor HDMI as well.
So this is the, the total cost and I think there was some confusion last week on getting rid of this system altogether, even though it was only a year old versus the, the audio improvements and the portability that we would be able to have in packaging this up and going out to our rural areas?
Correct.
And so on.
Phoning in to this meeting was never conceived until one of us went to Honduras. Never dreamt that would be an issue.
It wasn't even talked about when we designed that, so.
So are there questions?
I'm sorry, so the new system is portable or what's portable? What's going to go out?
We're going to take two mixers out of this rack and then the new system, including the phone-in, will just move into that rack. So basically, we're just upgrading the capabilities of that rack. We're not taking everything out.
So.
Is that easy to move around when you go though?
It's a little heavy, but the guys, they loaded it in the back Suburban, I think, a couple of times that you guys went, so.
So it already got done?
Mm-hmm.
So is there further discussion? Again, just an informational item that cleared up, you know, no, that cleared up things.
Yep.
hopefully forever.
And I appreciate you coming at the drop of a hat.
Sure, not a problem.
And I just wanted, on that note, to add, this will mitigate you having to come and service the un-gonna-box, which is the affectionate name for the phone-in system. So we appreciate that very much.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
It beats, it beats all of, all of you having to follow me to Honduras and have the meeting there.
Right, well, we will take that, that offer.
There's other options.
All right, thank you very much, Brian. Item 10 is RML Architect Mike Nezwick. This is to authorize a chairman to sign the agreement with Sioux Contractors for construction of Sioux Land District Health remodel meeting, Mike.
Yeah, you have Mike Nezwick with RML Architects. Mr. Taylor, you have before you four copies of the agreement between the owner, which is Woodbury County, and the Board of Health and Sioux Contractors for the Sioux Land District Health Department work. We've, I've written the contracts, we've run them through Joshua, Joshua's reviewed them. We'd, we have made the changes that Joshua asked. I went around, got the signatures from the contractor and from the Sioux Land District Board of Health, got it back to Karen on Friday. They do have the certificates of insurance and the bonds in there also. They're attached to the back of the contract. And so I think you have everything there to, to initiate the contract for them to start the work. Just as a side note, they're going to get started tomorrow, waiting for your pen put to paper there, but they are starting tomorrow morning. We're going to have a pre-construction meeting on Thursday at 3:30. Kenny, if you can make it. That just got set up at about 4 o'clock today. So, so anyway, they're ready to go. It's a short timeframe on the construction that for a two-phase project, so they're, they want to get, they're anxious to get going, so.
Very good. Is there a board discussion?
Move the chairman be authorized to sign.
The motion is their second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much, Mike, and we wish you well, Kevin, and, and your crew. Item number 11 is the County Fair Association, Randy Hayworth, with Woodbury County Fair Association response to funding.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to address this august body. And we came here with the interest of the county fair. We feel that we are charged with a really important duty of keeping the agricultural industry vibrant and fresh, encourage these young kids. And we are in response to the funding, which has already been approved. So the fact that we weren't here, we want you to know that we take that very seriously. We are not cavalier about just receiving every little bit of money from whomever it may come from. And I have a prepared statement, which I'd like to pass out to you. I'm glad to be here today. This today gave me the opportunity to have you not only have the face presented with the fair, but also I've talked to Kathy several times and we've never met. We got a chance-
Karen.
Karen, sorry.
That's okay.
And also I got the added pleasure of seeing my cousin, who was here from the Sioux City Journal. So that said, this will take a short time and I'll just go.
We won't hold that against you.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a Democrat Republican.
Depends on what he writes tomorrow morning.
Sure, I understand that. The recent budget meeting for the Woodbury County Supervisors came with somewhat of a surprise to us. We'd requested several times to be notified when the discussion was to be held so that the fair could answer your questions and present the interests of the Woodbury County Fair. This was not to be, and the board and I felt you and the public at large should have the opportunity to know just how the funding supplied by the county benefits the welfare of Woodbury County. The overall mission of the fair is to furnish a forum to reward the hard work of our 650 members of 4H, FFA, and Clover Kids in our county. Clover Kids is for children who are not old enough to be in 4H, and they've had a large increase this year primarily in Sioux City within the boundaries. It's for children that have agricultural products in the garden and some small pets, to those of you that don't know. Our enrollment, even though you say that our population is sixth in the state, we have the second largest enrollment of 4H in the state. The only county that we trail is Polk County, and we're quite proud of that. Educate the public, the importance and the impact of agriculture culturally and financially, and to provide a display venue for business to maximize the sales of their respective products and services. I might add that whenever possible, we try to engage the vendors, businesses, and entertainment based in Woodbury County to promote commerce directly relative to its citizens through additional applicable taxes. A study recently completed by Tufts University concluded that young adults involved in 4H are four times as likely to contribute positively, I might add, to their communities, two times as likely to pursue healthy life choices, and two times more apt to pursue STEM, science, technology, electronics, and math activities outside of normal school hours. The 2015 attendance of 70,000 souls included people from all walks of life, furnishing a location to meet, enjoy, and interface in an informal environment to learn, have fun, and discover that no matter what differences there may be, we still share a common bond that transcends. So on behalf of the 70,000 attendees, the 650 young exhibitors, the 125 businesses, 150 volunteers of the fair, board members, and myself, thank you. Thank you for your allocation. Allocation of funding to the continuing success of the Woodbury County Fair, we look forward to your continued support in the future. And with that, I would also like to add that I would offer my congratulations to Mr. Clausen on many, many years of service to the county. So I applaud you for that. Questions, your comments?
I have been a supporter of the fair forever. My wife, until last year, she had a conflict, has been pie superintendent for years. Now, that sounds weird, except they have a pie contest and then they sell them, they raffle them off.
It has its benefits.
Some of those pies go for $2,000 plus. How could you take that home and eat it?
We're very proud of the people that support our fair. And these are people that realize the importance of encouraging youth, the next generation of agriculture. And this county, even this city, that doesn't really realize it as much as they probably should, it's an agricultural-based economy around here. And we're putting food and we're putting clothes and education, and we, we take our charge very seriously.
Well, thank you very much for it. Any further discussion or questions from the board?
I would say I, I don't know about being a pie superintendent, but I certainly eat pie when I go out there. It's always really good.
I think we're all qualified to do that. I might add also, I know Sheriff Drew is here, and they come down and support our fair, and I just can't say enough positive about his deputies and the positive influence that they've had on the boards.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you so much for your presentation and for your kind words. And look forward to seeing you at the fair.
Okay, we hope to see you all.
All right, great. Item number 12 is SimCo, Megan Weaver with the Western Iowa Community Improvement Regional Housing Trust Fund presentation.
I'm Megan Weaver with SimCo. I'm the housing manager over all the owner-occupied rehabilitation programs for our five-county region, including Woodbury County excluding the Sioux City metro area. And I, just as, as Randy said, want to thank you guys for, for continuously funding our program and want to give you an overview of what your contribution has done for, for the county. In the first year that you funded the program, which we're, we're actually just now starting to wrap up, we were able to serve 19 households for a total of $177,000 worth of, of rehabilitation. Now, that was in the form of new roofs, new HVAC systems, windows, sidewalk improvements that were possibly trip hazards, things, things along those lines, electrical plumbing. That's a pretty impressive amount for your, your $15,000 investment in that, in that first year. Going forward with the additional $15,000 that you provided last year, we will be able to serve another 10 households for a total of $287-plus thousand worth of rehab. So your $30,000 investment has been a huge part of, of our success in, in the county. We've been able to serve households in Sloan, Lawton, Bronson, Climbing Hill, Smithlin, Correctionville, Salix, rural Sioux City, Mowville, and Danbury. So that is a pretty good representation of, of the county. We hope to be able to continue that in, in the future. We, we do anticipate, the applications are flowing in on, on a daily basis, so there's, there's always people out there with the need. And like I said, we do appreciate your guys' contributions, so.
So what do I have to do to have you come out and rehab my house?
Well, you have to be income-qualified, which maybe on your pay, I don't know. You might be, so.
What it taking the 5%?
No, the, for our program, it is an income-based program. They have to be below the 50% area median income. So for example, and, and these numbers are not set, but approximately for a one-to-two person household, they can make $30,000 a year. That's not a whole heck of a lot of money to be able to afford them to replace a $10,000 roof or $5,000 heating system or whatever the case may be. More than, than half of the people that we've served with the Housing Trust Fund have been elderly or disabled, so they're on fixed incomes. It's amazing what we see where people are, are living on $6,000 a year. So this program is definitely helping the most needy people out in our, in our communities, in our rural areas. So that-
Do they own their house?
They have to own their house. The, the house has to remain their primary residence for five years. If the house is, transfers title for any reason, they, they sell it, they deed it to somebody else, they owe back a prorated portion of those funds. Those funds go back to the Housing Trust Fund, the state Housing Trust Fund, and then are reallocated out to all the regional affiliates in the future years. So if somebody were to sell their house on year four, they'd owe back one-fifth of the amount granted to them. Now, if they keep the house for five years as their primary residence, then it is forgiven 100%. So that, that is a, we, we try to encourage them to continue to maintain their homes so that they are able to continue to, to stay in it, so.
So it keeps them in the house?
Absolutely, absolutely. And when we walk into some of these elderly homes, there's improvements that have to be made to make them more accessible so that they are able to, to stay in. We've done simple things that maybe we take for granted, hire toilet seats, you know, the, the grab bars, ramps, easy to open windows so that they're, they're getting some new ventilation. And we've ran into a lot of mold and mildew because of, of leaking roofs, which definitely presents a health risk to, to the occupants there, so.
Very good. Other questions or discussion?
Disclaimer, I'm on her board.
Yes. I appreciate your prompts.
Well, we thank you so much for, for coming, for making the presentation, for investing these dollars wisely on behalf of Woodbury County citizens. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is planning and zoning, John Pellelo, is to accept the zoning commission recommendation, hold a public hearing, and for the first reading of a text amendment to Woodbury County zoning ordinances authorized under section 2.02 of section 3.
Thank you, John Pellelo, planning and zoning. Before we would have you open a public hearing on this item, a little bit of history. This whole proposed amendment process to our zoning ordinances is related to truck terminals within Woodbury County. And it's tied to a contentious issue that surfaced last year related to an operation of a small trucking facility on 210th Street. Since that time, you heard a considerable amount of public comment both for and against that location. I just want to put this in the perspective of this is a proposed change in the ordinances that is not specific to just this piece of property. This would be county-wide. And I'll get into a little bit more of that later. Historically, your board tasked the planning and zoning department as well as its zoning commission to review this matter. They held two work sessions in 2015 in the November and December meetings. Came with a study recommendation, which they presented to you in January 12th. You reviewed that and forwarded it back to them to hold a public hearing on the issue and offer a formal recommendation. On February 22nd, that public hearing was held. There was considerable public testimony, testimony both for and against the passage of these ordinances for a number of reasons. The zoning commission voted to, verbatim, to recommend formally to you three amendments to our zoning ordinances, which were identical to those presented from their study session. Those are represented on the last page of the handouts in a draft of what we're calling ordinance number 39. And basically, if I had to categorize these, these are simply additions or changes within our definition section to fit the amendment process of making truck terminals categorized as home occupation use as a conditional use. And what that, impact of that means is this does not, by making this change, make a particular use available to a applicant. It requires them and gives them the ability to essentially submit a conditional use permit. Go before the five-member board of adjustment, state the facts of their particular case. All the public hearing processes held, including publication of notice, notifying property owners within a certain number of feet. Hold the public hearing, and then the board of adjustment makes a decision whether to grant the permit, to allow the issue, to deny it. And most commonly, if they're approved, they come with a certain number of conditions based upon the testimony. I'm happy to go through each of the amendment changes in detail if you want me to. But we're simply here, this is the public hearing and the first reading of the proposed amendment to the Woodbury County zoning ordinances.
Is there a desire for Mr. Pellelo to go through those steps?
Before we, I don't know if we should do this during the public hearing or not, but really what this amounts to is spot zoning, John.
It could result in a scenario where a use could be allowed that is conditional in nature. But in, from a zoning standpoint, Supervisor Clausen, I see that no different than what our home occupation rules did in 2008. And if you use that same analogy, it's, it's really spot-zoned the whole county by allowing a person who lives in a home to operate his business on that same parcel within certain rules. And these changes allow one of those approximately seven rules allowing the visibility of vehicles from off-site, off right-of-way, or from other parcels to be null and void if that permit's approved. However, that sounds substantial, but there are other tests in the home occupation use that mitigate that in that it limits the number of employees. It doesn't allow equipment to be outside. We're just talking about vehicles belonging to that business. In this case, it would be tractor-trailer rigs as well as the vehicles of the employees that work there. But you're limited to three employees other than the person who lives in the home. So it would be tough for anyone to come to the board of adjustment and ask for permission to park four tractor-trailer rigs, more than four tractor-trailer rigs, and get any kind of staff recommendation that might support that. I would think the board of adjustment would be very sensitive to the neighborhood testimony. And if the neighbors were in favor or didn't voice any concerns, they may issue the permit with certain conditions. If the neighborhood's against the thing and raises certain issues, they may deny it or permit it with conditions placed to mitigate those concerns.
Now, is the exception follow the property or follow the house, the person?
It's a very good question. It's a very good question. The, once the permit is issued, it follows the property. Unless the use ceases for, I think it's 180 days, then the permit's null and void. So what I'm, what I'm saying is if I moved in, if I bought the place and started doing the same thing within 180 days the guy before did, I could continue that use. If there's a six-month gap, I start over and would have to make a reapplication.
Based on my travels, there's going to be more than one request for a permit.
Obviously, we know we have them out there. I can think of two other locations that were tied to former complaints where we worked through the issue. But there are maybe dozens others that work under the home occupation rules where either of two things are happening. One, they've got a, a location that doesn't, we don't get the complaints. Or they're parking everything inside and are in compliance.
Well, I'm going to advocate support of this because it's a zoning commission recommendation for one. Two, it's a conditional use, and it's something that would have to be brought before ultimately the Board of Adjustment. Number three, I trust the Board of Adjustment. I trust the process, and I think those individuals, there's nothing less flashy and less exciting than a Board of Adjustment meeting. But that said, I think they do outstanding work in hearing all sides and going through a process and really balancing economic development with the impact, in this instance, to, to residents. And so I think that it's, it's ultimately a good thing in weighing that balance. Are there other comments, questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing on this item.
Move it.
A motion, is there a second?
To close it. Yeah, you're closing.
To close it.
Oh, to close, yeah.
I realize we're in the public hearing again.
My motion was to close it.
The motion was to close it, there was a second, and hearing no further discussion.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt. Is there anybody else that wants to be heard here? I think there may be parties in the room. Does any, no? Okay. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure everybody...
No, thank you for the due diligence done. Hearing no further discussion, either from the board or anyone in the audience. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Will the auditor please call the roll?
Clausen?
Now, this is just the motion to close the hearing.
Yes, it is.
Aye.
Monson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Taylor? Aye, and the motion carries five to zero. We'll now entertain a motion, John, to accept the zoning commission's recommendation on this agenda item.
Yes.
Approve the first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment language on attached exhibit A. And I will make that motion.
I will second.
Wait for a second if there is one. And there is a second. Is there further discussion?
I, I really hate to see us do this because we don't know what the ramifications are down the road. But right now, what you're doing is saying, if you have a residential area and somebody moves in and wants to start a trucking business, he can do that if he goes through the hoops and goes to the Board of Adjustment.
That is correct.
And in this case...
With all the safeguards of the public hearing process.
Right. And in this case, this person generated a lot of support in the neighborhood.
This is unusual because of that fact.
It blows my mind.
We probably wouldn't have gotten this far unless those parties would have came to you and, and pretty much laid it on the line of how they felt about it. There was tremendous support for, but obviously, there was tremendous support against.
And what's amazing to me, Supervisor Clausen, sitting in the Board of Adjustment meetings, is how many conditional use permits were denied for different reasons. And so having that, I, I, I think that that safeguards the process to say, you know, all of these conditions have to be met in order to balance the, the interests of these neighbors, or conversely, it simply can't be done, so we may have a difference of opinion.
Right. But then you're, you're burdening the Board of Adjustment by these things going there. We made a mistake, what, in 2006, 2008, that allowed this to...
Well, I'm, I'm, the home, there's a lot of background to this. Obviously, it goes back to a message that Woodbury County received earlier than that, in probably the 2003 to 2007 timeframe, where there was a very vocal outcry to the restrictions that previous zoning ordinances had placed on rural Woodbury County. There was a public outcry that said, hey, we want, we want less rules, not more. Stay out of our property rights. Let us do what we want to do on our property, and we will police our own. We heard that cry very loud. We started a task force that met for close to a year. A lot of heartache and headache during that period of time. And we came up with this, hey, we'll let you run your business, but you follow these tests, and we can drive by and pretty much not tell it's there, you're in. This softens that considerably for one specific component of business. And it's a component of business that is virtually impossible to meet the test, to stick a tractor, multiple tractor-trailer, trailer rigs in structures without spending a considerable amount of money. It's, I'm not going to say it's prohibitive.
So then they can't do it then, John, correct?
Then they can't do it.
Right.
That's right.
But if they want to spend the money and they want to meet the certain test that this Board of Adjustment has elected to safeguard those interests, then they, they would be able to do so.
That's right. And I would hope the Board of Adjustment would, would listen very closely to public testimony for that particular location.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
And the motion carries four to one. Thank you very much.
Just as going forward, we'll have our second reading on the 15th. It's our goal to complete this adoption process by the 29th of March. And unless you direct otherwise, the ordinance change will be enacted on the date we publish the ordinance.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Item number 14 is our county attorney, PJ Jennings, and county sheriff, Dave Drew, consideration and approval to participate with the city of Sioux City in the submission of the Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice and Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Program application to the, if you're not making your way already, okay.
He's my spokesperson. He dits me last. Do you remember?
John, you said we'll have another reading on the 15th?
22nd, 29th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
22nd, 29th.
Never mind.
You'll vote on 29th for that.
PJ, I'd be happy to move it and save you a lot.
PJ Jennings, county attorneys, yes, we just asked to move it. It's basically a routine item that we've had for a number of years now.
Move it.
Second.
A motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
Very convincing presentation.
Yeah. Item 15 is building services. Kenny Schmitz, first item is item A, LEC jail expansion project schematic design approval of funding and CMBA letter of proposal.
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services. In your packet, you should have received a proposal from CMBA Architects. The proposal outlines architectural fees and costs with an associated possibility of an expansion at the LEC. The first line item on what would be page two of that document is schematic design. And I'm asking approval from the board to move forward with that schematic design. The fee for that would be $20,350. What that would allow us to do is a schematic design to see what the possibility would be of an expansion on the LEC roof, what that might look at, look like, and what associated costs might come along with that. Also with us today is Brian Crichton with CMBA Architects. And Brian, if I could get you to come up and explain your proposal a little bit, that would be wonderful.
Good evening. Brian Crichton with Cannon Mossburger Architects. You have the copy of the proposal there. Basically, we've broken down our fee by phases, as Kenny indicated, schematic design, and then on through the project. But currently, we're looking at proceeding or getting approval for the initial phase of schematic design, which would allow us to, to look at what truly would fit architecturally, engineering-wise, space-wise, operations as well. So that's what this proposal is in front of you for tonight, so.
Which would give us a ballpark figure?
A ballpark cost figure for that, yes.
So then we would come back for design development?
Correct. We would not proceed until we have approval from your, your, your body, so yes.
I'd move that.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there further discussion, Supervisor?
Is, are you going to come to us with one option? Are there going to be a cup, is there a plan B, or anything that falls under this $925,000?
More than likely, we'll have two to three concept options that we'll look at and we'll price those accordingly, working with the Baker Group as well to go through those and looking at the impacts for each one. So probably rank them to some extent and then come for some, some input at the board level.
Very good.
Very good. And there were some minor changes that were made in coordination with Joshua?
Correct. And I think that's been done since the packet came out, so as long as the board chairman has that, and that's the one that's signed, we should be okay. Can I ask your questions about any of those? They're basically minor changes that our office asked for after review.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Item B is Woodbury County LED project contingency fund allocation. This is an information item only. Kenny?
Yes, the board has asked on a couple different occasions where the $70,100 LED lighting contingency figures lay, what the, what the, what the cost outlay is at the current date, how much of those funds we've utilized, and, and where those funds are being utilized at. And I've got the Baker Group here, Shane or Dave, if they'd like to step up, they've got seven or eight different light items where those, where those funds are being utilized.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Shane Olberth with the Baker Group. I think I'd like to start with kind of where we are with the LED project, just to give everybody an idea of kind of what we've got going on and where we're at for finishing for a timeframe. So right now, the Eagles is done, LEC finished up last week, we got the dimming part included. They're hoping to be done either the first part of next week or the end of next week with the courthouse here. Got the conservation parks going, the, all the, so a lot of the projects are all going. Suland District Health should finish up, should finish up this week as well. So we're getting a majority. I'd have to say by the middle of April, we will have everything complete and finished, which is way ahead of our scheduled completion date of June 1st to qualify. Then we'll start working to get all the rebates, to get all the final payments done, get the rebate. So I'm hoping that process all is, is very rapid and gets done quickly. So now let's move to where we are with the contingency fund, which is the other part of this.
Do you mind if I interrupt you there?
Absolutely, sir.
Just one question. Suland District Health, is there going to be any overlap or conflict, or I, I know that they're starting their, their project, or you've worked all that out and we don't need to work?
Kenny and myself met with Mike from RML. We worked through what we were doing. We got, we got a couple of clarifications in their thing, since West Plains was also the electrical part, that was all taken care of in a coordination piece. We worked with Mike, Mike and RML was very gracious in helping make sure that was all done well.
So you all had that figured out?
That's all taken care of.
All right. Thank you.
And we got out of that area, so everything, our area's done in that part, so we don't have any, any piece left of what they're doing, so we're out of their way.
Okay.
So where we are to date on contingency, of our $70,000, we've spent $46,178.61 approximately. That's basically, as Kenny stated, it's done on 11 line items. So I'll kind of run through those line items quickly. We had a change order at the very start of this thing for the fact that some of the fixtures were specified wrong as the wrong type of fixture in the wrong location. We kind of told you that when this all began. That was about $10,500 of that, okay? We had some fixtures that are missing at the secondary roads. That's about three grand. Small changes at the Eagles, about $500.
Missing mean unaccounted for originally?
Yeah, I mean, like you open up a door, there happened to be, there happened to be, oh geez, there's a clause that somebody missed, or different pieces of that nature. Thompson had a change order for control wiring, because the jail, after we did this, we thought it was too hard to try to include in the documents, so we were going to try to dim the cells around master and secondary controls to help for the jail. So that was about a $6,000 change order there, so that's part of that number. Another small one at the LEC, Echo, we had about $17,000 worth of different fixtures that we had to move around and get for all the different locations at all the buildings. Since all the buildings have all the fixtures delivered to us, we're, we're thinking we've hit the number there for what we're going to have to get for extra material, hopefully. And then the courthouse here, again, had some more fixtures and some different cubby holes, some places that they found, so we had about $12,000 in there for additional labor to get all the different spaces done.
Heavy loads?
Heavy.
In the courthouse, we had too many lights on one line?
We had, we had, yeah, too many. So in the courthouse, like, we went where the boating tables were, and everybody missed the fact that there was lights way up high tucked underneath the thing. So we, that's what I mean by we found different areas that had more, more things than what we originally thought. There was closets that were tucked in. Even after walking it three times when we were, when people were here, they still found other places that the lights were, so. Any other, any other questions?
So is the jail well lit?
Very nice.
And I don't know if anybody noticed, these are, these are the new LED fixtures down here, all done in, I mean, this area is complete. I don't know if you even noticed the difference or the...
Yes.
So there's not a different spotty gray every one or two?
I noticed it on that side. I didn't notice it on this side.
Every one who I have talked to is amazed by the difference in the lighting within their area. That's, I mean, they're pretty happy.
We've had a, we've had very few complaints, and a lot of people that are just very happy with, very happy with their area and stuff.
Do you foresee the need for any more use in the contingency fund? I mean, if the project is winding down, are there going to be funds left?
It's winding down. Right now, we have three floors left to finish on the courthouse. So there, there could still be a little more fluctuation. The courthouse number was just a guess, so I'm not, it's too early for me to tell. I tried to give you the best numbers that we have, but that's, that's where we're at right now.
Trust, we're right then.
Except for about three fixtures.
All right, very good. Any other questions? You'll keep us surprised, I'd assume, if there's something that...
If there, if there's any big surprises or anything like that, I'll come before you. I just was trying to give you an update because right now, we only have about 34% of our money left in the contingency, so I thought it was time for you to have an update so you knew where it was going.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the update all told. It's helpful, so. All right, very good. 15C is the funding source allocation for Woodbury County Clerk of Courts and Woodbury County Treasurer's Office from 2016, Prairie Hill CIP. This is an item that we visited last week and failed to take action on, and as far as where the allocation is coming from. And so, Kenny?
Yes, we, we've identified some, some areas where the funds are necessary to expend that the clerk of courts doesn't cover, that are, that are building-related. We've got things such as carpet installation, floor repair, and electrical and data wiring. Those amounts total up to an estimated $20,800. As always, when, when a project like this pops up rather quickly and we, and we need to make some quick decisions, based on all the information that we have available to us at the time, we, we do our best estimates. And then I get with Dennis and we, we try to... And then I get with Dennis and we, we try to figure out where those funds are gonna come from or how we can, how we can come up with the funds to fund what's necessary. On this, we looked at using 2016 Prairie Hills CIP funds which are available. There's a lot of different items. We had earmarked for Prairie Hills and of course, I don't recommend that we spend a lot of money out at Prairie Hills. They're only the necessary amounts that we have to. And so, I think this would be a, a good source for the funding and I'm asking for a motion to approve the $20,800.
Move it.
Sir, second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there further discussion?
How are you gonna book this, Dan?
What was the question again, Larry?
Uh, how are you gonna carry this on the books?
Okay, on the books, we'll carry by taking away from the $42,460 we have for Prairie Hills repairs, miscellaneous repairs. We don't really know where it's gonna be spent. Now, we have an item here for $20,800. That'll leave $21,660. And what I do, I make up a sheet for every CIP project now we have by building to keep track of every one of these as we pay them. So, we make sure we're either on target, over target, or under target.
Alright, so you all have a line item in the, in the CIP that...
Yes.
That were sold, that this has gone to?
Yeah, we're putting $20,800. Then we'll keep track as the bills come in. And then I'll leave $21,600 still out of Prairie Hills in case something does come up. That's the nice thing about our CIP projects because our estimates, it may be long or over, under, but we shift the money around within the CIP on projects at the board's approval.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other discussion? Did you want to say something else? Can you?
I just wanted to say, good question, Larry. And one thing I visited about Dennis with earlier today, I, I talked to him about all the different projects that we've got slated and, and coming up, and they're numerous. And, and how I didn't want to bother him every time I need a coding for a specific project that we're doing. Currently, we've been doing that. I'll call him up and say, hey Dennis, what do I code this at? What's the CIP number for it? And I asked him what his logic was with coming up with those numbers and he explained it to me. So, I'm hoping going forward to help Larry's line item discussion, I'll already have a number before a project ever comes up. I'll know what to code it to. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? There's a motion and a second. Hearing, no other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item 16, secondary roads, Mark Nara, A, is to consider an award of quotation for bridge inspections for 2016.
I recommend we award our bridge quotations, our bridge inspection quotations to Calhoun Burns and Associates. We're in the first year of a structural reevaluation with them, so.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item 16B, consideration of permit for installation of underground communications line within the highway right of way for Nepco on Ida Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. 16C is consideration of permit for installation of underground communications line within the highway right of way for Nepco on Carroll Avenue and 120th Street.
Recommend approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item 16D is consideration of annual weed commissioner appointment and report to Iowa Department of Agriculture.
Recommend appointment of Jared Jepson for calendar year 2016.
Move it.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries five to zero. Item 16E, they consider a, award a bid of construction for project FEMA 9 and 14, 73-97.
I recommend award to Holly Brown Construction for $55,741.64.
So, moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries five to zero. Next time, don't be so long-winded, Mark.
I'll try not to. If I could just, if I could just add one item, very quickly to bring the board some awareness. I'll probably be bringing a permit to you next week, but this work may start just a little bit quicker than that. Down at the Salix interchange, they're looking at having to install pumps to discharge some of the water that is trapped between the interchange. The contractor for that work has obtained all their property and our permits. They still need a permit to work within the right of way, but I'd like to be able to approve that administratively so that they can start work. They're planning to close the interchange on March 23rd. We're currently setting up our detours for that. That's about two weeks before the planned period had intended, but our weather is good. If we can get this started early, maybe we can get done early and minimize that time of closure for the folks in Salix. What they're going to be doing with the water is they're going to be pumping and piping it either down the interstate or down our Benton Avenue right of way, over 280th Street, putting a pipe through the Snyder Bend access road, and then discharging it near the outlet of Browns Lake where it discharges out to the Missouri River ultimately.
Where Beanster was talking about putting that tube.
Um, yes, that...
Yeah.
That might be able to serve a dual purpose. We don't know yet.
Uh, Mark, the DOT and I have been invited to a gathering Friday morning to discuss this, so.
Yep. We'll, we'll be at the Salix City Hall discussing it that day. And the other thing is Highway 20 is now closed. They're utilizing old Highway 20, our county road, D 22 and L 21 as part of the detour for that. Went out there today and looked in on the traffic. We'll continue to monitor that throughout the project.
Is it pretty congested?
Um, it seems like traffic is down a little bit to us. You know, we watch that go by our office on a daily basis. The thing I'm noticing right now is a lot of what I call platooning of the vehicles. So, you'll see eight, nine vehicles at a time coming through and then large gaps. It seems like the people who are driving slower and more cautiously are kind of, everybody kind of builds up behind them as they're moving their way through there. Right now, traffic seems to be flowing pretty well. They have had a big presence of DOT enforcement officers down there. There were three of them in place today monitoring that traffic at the turns and along Highway 20. So, DOT is putting a big presence out there early on to try and I think keep a lid on the speed on the, on the road. You know, we're in day two now. So, it didn't close till yesterday at 1:30. It was supposed to close yesterday at 8:00. They delayed that due to the dense fog in the area. But, we'll continue to work with the department on that.
Thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate the information. Item 17, Chairman's Report, A, is a Correctionville Rural Meeting. This is a discussion we had last time and just wanted to let you know that we had looked at a Wednesday night that was said not to be a good night because it was church night. I realized there was a conflict last time. April 18th on Monday, does that work for everyone? Anyone?
Works for me.
Works for me.
Sound good? Okay. Well, I will let the mayor of Correctionville know that 7:00 to 8:30. Does that sound...
Seven.
Be a good time?
Are they having any city meetings that same day or?
Not that I, not that I know of.
And where's it gonna be held?
That I will let you know.
Okay.
Alright, very good. Be back in touch on that. Item 17B is a policy review on land and CIP items. John Pellelo received a call about county-owned land, not on a tax or sheriff sale, and Joshua provided me with a, an opinion on the next page. And so, I just asked John to bring this forward to the board post July 1st. John had asked who ought to handle this, and I think that our public bidder may be one who this is routed to. But, after this process, as we look at this particular parcel, and I handed out the, the parcel that was in question, which is near Prairie Hills, and just wanted to have a discussion on how we want to proceed in the future regarding the sale of such land. And so, John, do you want to give some introductory comments and then we can...
Sure. I'm basically here basically because I got a phone call. And I would assume most of these calls either come to the board office or to my department. It doesn't happen very often. But, in this particular case, it was a request to purchase some portion of ground around the Prairie Hills facility. I don't want to talk about the specifics of that particular, it's not even a purchase offer. It's just a feel, a feel-good, you know, feel out the county and whether we're interested in selling property. And I don't have the answer to that question. And I think as a department head, I probably should. Are we, how are we determining the best and highest use of the, of the real estate we own? Is it, is it best being used in a cash rent farm scenario or is it got a better use and a better value? I, I'm not here to get a decision tonight. I just think we should probably open discussions at some time in the future in regard to assessing all our real property and determining whether we want to hold on to it or not and we'll move forward as a...
I can speak to this piece.
Okay.
This was discussed back 2000 or before.
Okay.
And it was decided that the rental income was far greater than whatever, you know, we could sell it for. There was just no thought of any kind to sell it.
Well, I'm, I'm...
But now with the...
The other piece of that is, hey, what would it be worth on, on a market, either sold in one big piece or in some form of division? If we're not interested, I'll tell the party that now. But if we are, want to explore the issue, I'm happy to participate in the process.
Well, I did ask the sheriff on this particular parcel. I realize that's not the discussion at hand isn't on this particular parcel, but it does beg the question. And Joshua provided an email, which I wanted to provide to all of you, that we would not typically do a direct sale, but it would be under a, a public hearing and a bidding sort of process?
Correct. And just off the top of my head, I can't think of other county property that's in a similar position as that parcel in the sense that it's, you know, maybe, maybe expendable. We have had scenarios come up from time to time. We had the nursing home property over by the Lakeport Commons that we got on a tax sale. Typically, those things have gone, I think, started with the board office. And then if it's outside of the norm of kind of what they usually do, they've consulted with our office and we've come up with a plan as far, on the procedural side. I mean, ultimately, the, the board makes the decision as far as what happens with the property. In, in that case, we held an auction, like a sealed bid auction. And we also had a, the sale of a group home over by Hornick, and that we actually listed with a real estate agent. So, there, there's different options, but there's paperwork we have to do along the way for each one. And we have to, we have to get a fair market value for whatever property we sell. And it's very hard to do that without opening it up to basically anyone that wants to put a bid on it.
Sure. So, in this instance, when a prospective landowner comes forward, is there interest if we look at what we're getting currently on rent versus what could be a potential and then be brought back before the board for a vote on whether or not to sell that land or hold a public hearing to sell or not to sell that particular parcel?
Yeah, and it, I mean, if, it's kind of up to the board as far as how they want to handle that. At, if it, if it's something like the county farm, that's probably something that should be discussed at a, a board meeting and decided that you want to go ahead with looking into selling it before we go through the formal process of publication and things like that. I know even in the time that I've been here since 2010, there's been interest from farmers, I think, in the farmland. The farmland, like 202 acres. So, I, there's been parties along the way that have shown interest. And it's always been an analysis of, you know, the one-time pot of money that you receive for it versus a yearly rent, you know, the cost benefit analysis.
And that is zoned, that particular parcel is zoned for limited residential right now?
Yeah, low-density residential development of two dwellings per quarter, quarter.
Other questions or discussion? So, in looking at this, I will, I will look at if, if there's any interest on the board on this particular parcel versus what is gotten from the gain of, of rent. And if the, if the board so chooses to, to move forward, we can do so at that point? Is that correct understanding?
And we, I think the parties, the interested party's been made aware of this, but it's in a three-year lease. So, any sale would have to occur after that. I think this is the first year of the, of the three years, so.
Party is aware of that and this is a long-term planning situation for a person, his own personal residence. This, our, my inquiry is more of a philosophical one. Hey, are we interested in vetting any potential offers? Or should we, or are we in a mode of, hey, it's not for sale? That's basically all I kind of really want to know. And if it, if we do decide to vet offers, hey, what are the parameters of what we think the value is? So...
I think we take any and all inquiries and do a cost benefit analysis.
Vet them independently?
And if it doesn't make sense to the county, then it doesn't make sense. But if it...
Yeah. And obviously, there's a, there's a more to, more to selling it off in pieces than just, hey, that's a good price per acre. Let's take it. You have to take into consideration the impact carving out that piece might have on the marketability of the remainder of what you keep. So, it's, it should be a well-thought-out plan on, hey, if we were going to sell, what would we offer first? What part of, maybe even what parcel? It's also tied to county engineers, a paving policy in regard to where people can put drives. Might not be a problem out here, but you don't know till you check that. So, it's a, it's a, there's a lot that goes into deciding this. Once you start selling, you better well thought it out because it may tie your hands in the future as to what you can do.
Yeah, and the thinking of past boards is that you've got a one-time windfall, let's say $2 million on 200 acres. But, that doesn't really compute with a yearly income. And the rents just keep going up and up. Of course, this year, it's like turned around.
Yeah, I think it's gone down the last two years from its peak.
Probably.
For the last two cycles.
Well, yeah, but we, we ran it out a year in advance.
Prior lease, I think it was 90-some thousand a year that we were getting. It was about 75 this year.
But it's a constant flow into the county coffers.
I'll direct this party. I'll get back to this party and just tell them here, we're kind of taking it under advisement and we'll let you know. And it probably will take a little bit of a time period before we...
I think the party may be in the room.
Are you here? Oh, there you are. Hi. How are you? Is there anything you want to say?
Thanks for considering.
Okay, very good.
I'll wait till I hear.
We'll do, we'll do some more study and bring something forward.
And let me know what we can do.
If it's deemed to make sense. Thank you very much. The other, the other policy item was on, on CIP items. Is there, as we've gone through this policy or through these initial procedures, is there anything that we need to, to do differently as far as CIP items and how they're, they're handled? Dennis and I had a conversation and he had mentioned that we may want to shore up policy. So, I didn't know if this is something that needs to be routed to the policy review committee or if there's anything that Joshua, you would have us to do differently as we go along with so many CIP projects?
What are you thinking? What's happening?
I think it goes back to the discussion last week and when something has to come back for approval if it's in the CIP budget. And Dennis and I spoke this week and I think we're kind of in agreement with the principle that it's, that it should come back to the board. Now, we could establish a policy for smaller items, you know, a certain dollar threshold or something like that. But I think his... But I think historically, it's been budgeted for, and, I mean, that number is an estimate or, you know, placeholder, as you call it a lot of times, and historically, that hasn't been a signal to the department head, okay, you can go ahead and do this project, it's still, you know, has to come before the board for, you know, here are the specifics of it and the costs, and it's not as, it's not as big of a deal when it's something where there's a contract, or it has to be bid out, and clearly, in that process, it comes before the board. But it's, you know, more in the smaller items that may be more of a gray area, so it would make sense to have a policy establishing what that threshold is, where it comes, when it should come before the board.
You say it would make, it would make sense to have some, is that something that at some point, the policy review committee might be able to take up with Kenny?
Yeah.
And just say lower-level items, I don't know what that is, but under $5,000 or $10,000 that are already, you know, and again, you all could work that out, is that...
Dennis or Kenny, next meeting is Wednesday, the 30th, 10:00 AM. If one of you just want to email me a summary and come to that meeting?
And I spoke with Kenny a little bit about this too, and we're distinguishing CIP projects separately from things that are repairs that are, that come out of his budget, and, you know, they need done, and yes, he has the authority to go ahead and do that, but it's budgeted for. The CIP is a different animal, that's why we have to treat it differently.
Okay. Alright, very good. Item C is, March 23rd is just a reminder, Janet Carl, Long Range Planning, that is at 8:30, Dorothy Pico, and I gave a little bit of a summation. Is it the intention, and I wanted to ask this publicly, of a majority of the supervisors to be there, and we will post it publicly from there, so just wanted to get a yay or nay, so we knew.
Yay. I plan to be there. Janet Carl.
She's a facilitator for Long Range Planning that we went through last year, it was broken up into three different days with multiple supervisors and leading us through it, what she calls a logic model, a way for continual process improvement, goals, coming up with the vision statement, those sort of things, so...
So, what is she gonna do, just go over the results?
She'll go over the results, talk about shared vision statement, how, give some examples of how those logic models have worked in various departments, and have continued conversations of where we can go in the future.
Who all will be at that, it's just one day, right?
Right.
One day. All the people that participated last time, which were department heads and elected officials, I think we had 28 that came.
So, there's no problem with space, we have plenty of space out there.
No. I did send this, what you have there is dead-on, that was great. I sent that to Janet, I've been communicating with her, she's excited about coming next week, and I think what you have there is her goal, so...
And there'll be, I believe, a light breakfast and lunch, so, I'm hearing that the majority of supervisors will be there, and this will need to be a posted meeting, so...
Can you, that, and also send out notice to all those people?
Very good. Item 17D is April's National County Month, and so I was just wanting to see if we wanted to do something, including maybe posting a video from ISAC that I thought was very good on everything that counties do, passing a resolution for it, and maybe even having a, what they call the citizens college. Every department head could give a two- or three-minute summation, and we can inform the public on what it is that we all do as a county, and to hear the resounding excitement. So, yes.
Well, you know, a few years back, I did kind of toy with the idea of like an academy-type deal, I mean, that was gonna be like a really big deal, so I pulled together, if I could find it somewhere in my office, I researched other counties, and, I mean, I was gonna close down the street, and we were gonna do all sorts of things, and show off all the toys, and, you know, Sheriff's Department, emergency management, and have people come in and out, I mean, just because they do citizens academy, and they do police academy, and I thought maybe we, but it was during an election year, and they said, not a good idea, because I think the auditor said it, that won't look like you're just trying to get votes, so I just put it away, but I've been waiting for the time to get this going.
I brought it up, and I'm not up for election, but if you want to take, I mean...
Well, see, but I am, so now I'm afraid again, because here it comes again, and, but anyway, I'll get that to you if I can find, because there were some really, really cool ideas that other counties did.
Okay, great. Any other thoughts on that?
Will she listen to you, Pat? That ought to be...
I'm hearing Mr. Clausen volunteer to head that up.
I was actually making fun of the auditor.
I think that'd be a good idea, Larry, you can be on my committee for that.
There you go. Okay, well, I will, we'll look for that, and hopefully pull somebody together.
I hope I can find it, yep, somewhere.
E is a 24/7 lobbying update, and so, we've collectively contacted the legislature at a good meeting with the Speaker of the House, House Majority Leader, it did pass the Senate 36 to 12. It is now funnel-proof because it's in Ways and Means, which has a taxing component, I guess, and hopeful, I contacted the lobbyists today, there's been no movement yet, but we'll see if we can get it done, so thank you all for collective voice on behalf of Woodbury County.
Didn't it pass the Senate last year?
Yes, it's always been in the House.
It's never even got to the floor in the House, has it?
They do have a conforming amendment, and so, the Majority Leader likes it, and said he'd place it on the floor, so hopefully, we'll give it the old college try.
On the floor, under the rug, or whatever.
And with that, are there reports on committee meetings?
I just have one, last Friday, we did a tour for about 140-some third graders from Sergeant Bluff, along with probably 12 to 15 adults, so we had quite a group. Lieutenant Wingert spoke on behalf of the Sheriff's Department, and Major Wick was there. A dog came, interestingly, every single one of the 140-some kids knew the dog's name. Went up in a courtroom, and Mr. Jennings puts on a show that's just unbelievable. He had them act out a mock trial. Some poor kid stole some cookies, and they had to vote whether he was guilty or not, of course, you know what they did. And the judge, Judge Tott spoke, and the court reporters demonstrated what they do. Then they all got to go to the eighth floor and look out over the city. Pretty excited group of kids, and well-behaved, wow, I was just blown away how great they were. That's all I got.
We had a wellness committee, oh, what?
They got to vote?
Oh, I forgot all about that! Come on, Mark. We sent ballots to the school, and they got to pick from six Republicans and two Democrats, and...
That doesn't seem right.
Well, that was, that was prior to some of them getting out. So, the teachers taught them how to do that, and then as they came in, they each had to put it in the ballot reader, which took a long time, and then they got the results immediately, and they were just tickled pink, and I can't remember what they were.
Was it a winner?
I don't remember.
Thought it was, uh...
Felt the burn.
Thought it was Bernie and Rubio.
That's it, yeah, that is right.
What school was it?
Sergeant Bluff.
Wondering how it's leaning down there, that's what the parents are gonna be doing, so, we had a wellness committee today, but actually, I'm not gonna report out, because we're gonna have a bigger report in a couple weeks, and we'll probably want to agenda items, so...
Very good. Other reports on committee meetings? Hearing none, we are to citizens' concerns. Are there any citizens who are concerned?
Are there any citizens?
Item 20, Board Concerns and Comments. Well, hearing none, I'll make one comment. Just want to say, welcome back to Supervisor Clausen, and with your announcement recently, thank you for your service as someone has done already today, and it's good to have you back.
You gotta put up with me for about 10 more months.
And you with me, so, that's alright. Alright, any, anything else? Let's adjourn.